That you gave me.
You want a copy? I have an extra.
If you do, you're worried I walked on my desk. Sorry.
Alright. Seeing that it's five o'clock, let's say we open up the meeting. Everyone please rise for the pledge.
Sorry.
We're gonna wait till you sat back down. The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want me to get a letter opener?
Sure. Yes, thank you.
Just thought of that.
Good evening, everyone. On tonight's agenda, we'll be opening up the sealed bids for our police cruiser that's parked outside and it looks like we have nine bids.
Yep.
Excellent.
Pretty awesome.
And then our fire chief, code inspector, building official Gary Somros in to chat about some fire department and roles.
Yep. The future.
The future. And then we have some roundtable stuff to talk about. So with that, we'll start to open up these bids. Bid number one. There's no like drum rolls or anything? Alright, so bid number one is four thousand thirty-seven dollars. I wonder if that person caught wind of somebody else's bid at four thousand thirty-six dollars.
I don't know.
Cruiser bid. This one is for two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Bid number three. Thirty-six hundred and one dollar.
See the impact eBay has had on things, huh?
Yeah. Bid number four. Is for two thousand dollars. Bid number five was for three thousand five hundred and five dollars. This one's interesting, all the way from Ohio.
What? Yeah, a couple came in the mail, I was like...
Maybe it'll be like some of the houses sell for cash here.
And the next one's from Illinois. Twelve hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Twelve hundred and eighty dollars. From Illinois.
Are they related?
Twenty-six hundred dollars. Local bid. And our final bid. Is forty-one hundred and fifty dollars.
One oh one a chicken dinner.
Was that, what was that other one?
Four oh three seven. Okay.
Do you think it's alright, it's fine to read his name over right? It's the same difference.
Yeah, it's a sealed bid, we would announce it anyway.
Yeah, so the highest bid is from Mike Duboy from Jaffrey for forty-one hundred and fifty bucks.
Okay. I think he was the one that emailed me saying he forgot to put his email address or something.
Excellent, so you guys wanna have any discussion? If we should consider any of the lower bids or we're just going straight for the higher bid?
I think straight for the high bid.
Yeah, I thought.
Agreed.
I thought that's what you had to do.
Yeah. Throw it out there. We like to talk about stuff, too.
That's true. We could take it down the road.
So thank you for all that took time to put the bids in and we're gonna make a motion to approve the high bid of forty-one hundred and fifty dollars to Mike Duboy for the old police cruiser. Is there a second?
How's second?
All in favor?
Alright.
And it goes over to Debbie.
Can I slide this over, too?
Sorry Debbie, I smashed the chip open.
Right. Felt the heaviest.
Should I like scan these all and put them with the minutes or no?
That'd be ideal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Although it has names and phone numbers and email addresses, so maybe not. I'll just, I can just put the names?
Yeah, yeah, just compile a list, maybe.
On the minutes?
Yeah, yeah. That'll work. Alright. With that.
How do you want your agendas?
Chief Somro.
I'm gonna give you some information here. What I've been doing is compiling some information for the last sixteen weeks of doing the position and we've chatted about whether we can see to make this a full-time building inspector or fire chief's position. So I've taken sixteen weeks of data, there is a pie chart in there so you see how it works, admin duties of the stipend positions that are doing and how it breaks down to put some money from those departments to offset the costs if you decide to hire a full-time person. We're working right now, because we're in budget season, working with Mitch every Wednesday, trying to develop a budget and that's where we need to go forward, how we're gonna develop budget for next year.
Okay.
And if you wanna take a moment and digest it and just timeframe, ten months is coming quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Just sort of to get a plan in place and if that is the route that we're gonna go with a full-time position to get it accomplished, you know, there's not a lot of time to waste on it, so.
Yeah, and March is coming even quicker, which is kinda would be that focus, like on the March vote.
Mm-hmm, that is correct.
I'd imagine this would have to go separate through Warren.
Yeah, either Warren or you just put it in the budget, I mean, there's a couple ways you could do that.
Yeah, yeah. Do you care to lead us through the sheet or?
Yeah, so anyways, what I've done is, you know, a timeline of, you know, approval for adopting a position, you know, then we need to set a salary scale, finalizing the job description. The job description is pretty much already written, it's pretty much there, might have to be tweaked a little bit. We've done that previous. And then we'd go to advertising, conducting interviews, which is gonna take, and then hiring the candidate. You know, interviews are done by an outside group, we bring some fire chiefs, individual from the fire marshal's office, they actually conduct the interviews. We sit and listen as a participant, but we don't actually ask the question, we have an independent board that would conduct the interviews, you know. And one thing, you know, if you did get somebody local or something, so it's not a biased opinion.
Okay.
Is the way that happens and that's the way it's done throughout the state.
Alright, so you're envisioning this being probably more, like that fire chief role would be a more, trying to think of the term, like a higher ranking, like it would be the predominant
Right.
Part in the hiring consideration.
In the hiring consideration and we could combine it with both, we may have to bring in somebody with some building experience too, you know, and it really should be a combined position. And I think when the combination is probably an affordable position.
Yeah.
Given the timeframe and if you look at the pie chart that I put on the thing, it's busy. I know, like you say, I dedicated my Wednesdays to the town and, you know, today's been five phone calls, I've already got one inspection in, one inspection tonight. And even when I've been working, I've been doing inspections when I get home, so it's increased, you know, tremendously. And then helping Susan pricing out permits on Wednesdays, so it's a pretty busy task. So when you look at the pie chart, that is only admin duties, that doesn't include trainings, calls or anything like that, that is really just admin functions.
Okay.
So you kinda see what it's all about, you know.
And in the building inspector is included the code enforcement officer?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So that, you were saying the interview process would be done by the state and we would end up, I don't know, I guess I...
We would, well, it would be specific, so we would hire, or not hire, but we would get a group of local fire chiefs to come in and do, conduct the interviews and specifically for the fire chief's position. To make sure that whoever you're gonna hire understands the rules, understands the laws that need to be, you know, that they have some experience, you want somebody with some experience.
Yeah, so then that would, that's how the pool of candidates would be presented to the town then?
That is correct, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And then usually what would happen, depending on how many candidates you get, you would have a selection of two or three and then ultimately the selectmen, the fire department, we would send a candidate to you for selection.
And hopefully they have some building code experience.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, what I feel I've heard is that on the fire end of things, there is some overlap with building codes and...
It's, well, you know, fire, I mean, you have life safety code, inspections, foster care, schools, those things are kinda all wrapped into the fire side of things.
Yeah.
And then just hopefully that, you know, they could pick up building code or that we can get someone that's been doing dual role positions already, you know. There's not many towns that do that, although Ringe is a dual role. And you see, I listed out the surrounding towns, comparable salaries to what other towns are paying.
And since you have been covering the, you know, all the roles, you feel that it's warranted for a full-time?
Absolutely, I mean, we're not, you know, even on, just on building side, I think we're missing a lot of opportunities. Even, you know, there's expired permits, which is a fee and it's just a tremendous amount of work to go through and find all that stuff, you know. And I think even like relatively speaking, our building permit fees are on a low scale of things, you could actually increase them, help generate some revenue to cover the cost. Not by a lot, you wouldn't wanna raise them a lot, but there's some monetary values that could be gained with a full-time position with somebody with eyes on it, you know.
Yeah.
There's additional inspections that could be done that we could pick up and it's just hard, there's just so much time to pick up every little piece of it. Yeah, and I know it's a different culture shock to the town to add more and I know there's an expense to it, but I think those expenses could be, you know, overcome by some increase in fees and picking up some of the spots that we missed. I know there's expired building permit fees out there, which there's revenues that we're missing that with someone with more time, they can sit and cover that cost.
Yeah.
On the fire chief's side, you know, there's grant, grant monies available, but it's a lot of work to do a grant and it takes a lot of time, you know, we hired a grant writer last year to do one, we haven't heard on it. But that's an expense when you have to hire someone.
Right.
And I know grants take a tremendous amount of time. I've written two grants for the schools for renewable energy projects and, you know, it took me months to put those grants together, it's just a lot of work. With someone in that position would have the time to be able to do that. And they'll be very busy, you know.
Yeah.
There's other monies out there through different organizations, you know, for fire money that could be had, but again, it's a lot of time spent to do that.
Yeah.
And this covers salary, not benefits?
Not benefits, I don't know what, I didn't...
Insurance, retirement?
Right, yeah, that would have to be on top of that.
Okay.
And if you look at all the other comparable sal, those are just base salaries.
Right.
And I believe, looking at their budgets, you know, their benefits added into it after, so.
How many, any idea how many building permits we've put out this year so far?
Like, in the first sixteen weeks, I've done a hundred and forty-six inspections in sixteen weeks. And I've done seven code enforcement issues and those code enforcement issues are still ongoing. And trying to contact people and track people down, you know. And I like to think that I take it with a little different demeanor, that I like to get in front of the people and chat with them and talk to them first. I don't go in with a hammer and say, this is what you're gonna do. This is what, this is what, what are you gonna do? And we've had two that's been successfully resolved here and they have some more to deal with, you know.
Yeah.
And, you know, trying to get some out-of-town people, trying to get in contact, their phones are disconnected and trying to solve the problems, you know, I feel it's a problem solver person going in with a hammer and beating one in the head, you know, and sending letters, I'd rather go face-to-face and talk to people, you know.
The catch-up to a subject I was going to bring up a little bit later is, um, would it be possible just to get, I don't know, from, from Sue or from you, a summary, a monthly summary of the, of those problem sites that you've just referred to?
Code enforcement.
Yeah, it's in I-Works, they're all, they're all in I-Works.
That may be, but we're not getting a copy of that.
Yeah.
And we should be kept abreast of what's going on.
Yeah, 'cause people do ask.
Yeah. The only thing, some of those, it would have to be careful how we put that information out because the complainant on the enforcement piece, they wanna remain anonymous and they don't want their name out there, so you kinda have to be a little careful with what you put, you know, broadcast for knows that.
I mean, I could email it to you guys, but just an FYI confidential, not actually bring it to a meeting.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. And just once a month would be sufficient, unless something flares up. What we need to know about now. Or write that on the record. Yeah, I think that's a good... Yeah, I think we need the visibility on that.
Yeah, that'd be, you know, good to know what's being tracked and...
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you want to, you can just put down initials or whatever you want for the complainant.
Well, I mean, it's a report that prints out, so I can't change it. Can't alter the report.
Yeah.
So on this last page here, the comparable fire chief salaries, Ringe and Jaffrey stand out. Are they both combination roles or?
Ringe is a combination role, Jaffrey is not. This is a, is the fire chief's position only.
And Ringe also, I mean, I don't, I don't know about Jaffrey, but Rick's been, I mean, it's Rick who used to be our... So, and he's been in Ringe for what, twenty-something years?
Years, right, yeah.
So longevity in there too.
Yeah.
Was Rick doing Jaffrey also at one point?
No.
No. They have their own, Jaffrey has their own building inspector.
They had Mason's Fire only.
Right, Mason's Fire only.
Will's Fire.
And I think his salary's been increased, so that may be off a little bit.
Yeah.
But everything that I've done here is, is on the conservative side, 'cause I wanna make sure that I don't want somebody to come back in six months and say, hey, I thought you said this is what it is, so these are conservative numbers on, you know, these numbers here are conservative, so.
Yeah. I did hear like an increase from Mason, too.
Right, yes.
An increase from what?
From the seventy-five.
Yeah, it's, I think it's...
I already, might be eighty now, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
So we should probably have another meeting with the committee of the, should we do a combined position people?
Is there a committee?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who was all on the committee?
Gary, Dee Daly, Eric Maxwell, Meredith was. Um... Is that it?
Myself.
Yeah, Wendy came a couple times.
So would you be wrapping that?
Am I thinking of something else?
No, yeah, she, I think she did come down and look, right, to that one?
I think so, yeah.
Or we were meeting too when we were having those emergency stuff.
That's what I, I know, 'cause it was down, I remember being downstairs.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll give them some thought to wrapping emergency services into the, into that role also.
Are you talking like the ambulance?
Yeah, if you read through what I've...
Oh, EMD, emergency management.
And if you look at, you know, the numbers that I've put down there, so.
Yep, yeah, so that is, that is a part of the option.
Right.
So when you, on this, you say current costs that can be directed to the full-time position?
Though that, yes.
Is that all of those?
If you combine them all together, the forty-three, thirty-one, those funds would be directed to the full-time position. Or if you didn't wanna put the EMD in there, then the other, the thirty-eight would be directed.
So essentially, that's what we're paying now?
Yes, yeah, essentially, that's what we're paying now.
Eight thirty-one.
Right, yeah. And even like the fire department stipend positions and those guys that just, if I can get out of that, I would be happy to, 'cause I just don't have time to do it. You know, it's just a lot of work and like you say, there's conservative on the hours, you know, there's a lot more hours put into it than what reporting, but I'm just trying to be conservative and real, you know.
So that work wouldn't have, like that could be done by that person?
By that person would be able to handle all those tasks.
Gotcha.
Right, yes. That person between those two positions would be very busy.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a lot of work.
Yeah. Yeah, no, this is great to finally see, you know, some numbers on paper and then based off reality, like...
Right, exactly, well, that's why I wanted to track it and just throw numbers out there, I wanted to do some tracking to see what it is. As I said, I logged down all my inspection times, building inspections, dates, addresses and I try to track phone calls, but you get so many even when you're driving down the road, it's, it's hard to
Yeah.
Track all them, but it's at least three to four phone calls a day, a lot of times it's five or six and sometimes it's six days a week.
Yeah.
That people will call with questions, you know, so it seems to be a lot more, like you say, kind of a a little different clientele in town, so to speak, if that's maybe not to profit, but a lot of new people in town that are from out of the area, that's been in areas where there's really stringent codes and people are tough and, and they wanna questions, you know.
Yeah.
You know, I got a call today about a French drain, I gotta dig out my French drain, do I need a permit, you know? So it's those are the type of calls that you feel, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And them ones are relatively easy.
Right, yeah, exactly, but it's, it's a phone call, you know, and...
It's when someone wants to do their own septic, that becomes a little bit more of an issue.
Right, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But it's doable.
Yeah, well, I don't, they were talking about changing that in New Hampshire.
Really?
When I was, when I did mine, I did mine and the state inspector said there, there's a, right now, there's a push to get rid of it. I said, I hope not, this is look for your, look for your guys, state, and I think having a contractor do it, you just up the cost of everyone's homes, everything's already expensive enough, so.
Yeah.
You do have to have a design.
Yes, it has to be an engineer design.
You have to, you have to engineer design.
Yep. That's always been true, though. Yep.
Yeah, no, this is all great information, Gary.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's exactly what we need in order to, you know, this will be the first bit of information that goes out, like as a part of these minutes, out to the community, to get that conversation going. And then, you know, we'll look to get that group back together. When's the road committee meeting, Debbie?
Well, it was...
Did we get enough respondents?
No, two people responded, one said they couldn't, one said they could, and that was it.
Yeah.
So it was supposed to be October eighteenth. But I was thinking we should, like, I'll just schedule it for the twenty-fifth because nobody said they couldn't go on the twenty-fifth and people can't go on the eighteenth, so.
Yeah. So what I'm thinking is we could stack the meeting, like for that combined role committee, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think the general public has any idea how much free labor goes into this.
Yeah.
I mean, it's incredible to see how much stuff is not paid for. And I would say ninety percent of what we do is not paid.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, you know, this was really just admin stuff, not, you know, not calls or trainings or anything like that, it's just really admin work and pricing and getting quotes and...
Well, I think most of the public thinks it's still a volunteer fire department, which
It's amazing.
In a lot of ways, in many aspects, from what I hear, it is.
Yeah.
But it's not. And this would really move it to the next level where
Right.
It would not be volunteer and probably, I'm assuming, that would have a trickle-down. That people, all the firefighters would then be more likely to be like, hey, he's making X amount and I'm making, I don't know what, what does the average firefighter make?
Less than seventeen bucks every hour.
Yeah.
So, but I think... A budget is about twelve hundred dollars for, for stipends, for the pay, paid for them is about twelve hundred.
Most people, when we get to their house, go, what took you so long? And go, well, I had to get up, put my pants on, put my shoes on. You are in the center of town. No, no, we're all at our houses, most people think we stay at the fire station. You got all these people from Massachusetts moving in and going, what took you guys so long?
I remember SVAS saying the same thing.
Yeah, most people think we stay there, so when they, when they have an emergency, we did a, we did a cardiac arrest in the morning, that's what the wife said, what took so long? And go, we all came from our houses, she was, are you serious?
Welcome to small town.
Yeah.
Small town American.
This is, and, and most people don't know that and that's the truth, you know, most people, when you get there and their house on fire, go, it took you eleven minutes to get here. I know, we're doing good.
Pretty good.
Yeah, we're doing really good. Well, that's eleven minutes of burning, you go, I know, but I was in Milford, so that's pretty good, you know?
Yeah, no, and I'm not saying, all I'm saying is how I see this going.
So the...
Probably will go that way and, and it may be that our town has reached the size that that's just what we need, I don't know. Probably will go that way and, and it may be that our town has reached a size that, that's just what we need, I don't know.
I can tell you that the fire department guys on the, the department, none of them are gonna go, hey, this guy's making eighty grand, we wanna raise. You're all gonna go, oh my god, we don't have to do as much anymore. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a huge breath of relief because there is so much that these guys are taking on. That we go, hey, payroll budget isn't there, we don't have money for this, okay, I just won't clock in or I won't get paid for it, and that's, that's mentality where. We've all been good with it.
I was gonna say, in the, in that you guys are all there because you wanna be there, you love doing it, you love helping the community.
And, and none of that's gonna change.
Right.
We might just be able to take, we might be able to take on more, is really what's gonna happen is the jobs that we have that really should be administrative, we can then go on.
And do other, more, more intensive training, things like that.
Awesome.
Even on, on the building side of, when I go out to a contractor, I, I poll them and I ask, would you support a full-time building inspector? And they all say absolutely.
Yeah.
Right.
Just because sometimes there's delays in getting permits and things get held up.
Yeah.
Uh, when they need an inspection, you know, time is always a rush, they're always in a critical path.
Right, and they can't move on to the next step.
Can't move on till that piece is done, and it's like, you know, I, I do inspections at six, seven o'clock at night when I get home from work, just so we're not holding them up. Whether it's insulation, so they can drywall and, and, uh, so everybody I've talked to, no one has said absolutely not. Everyone I've talked to said they, uh, it would be nice to have a full-time position with someone available to expedite those.
And the fact that the building inspector and the fire.
It's all one.
It's all, it, you need both of them to get the CO.
So when you do a CO, you're conducting the CO as a final for both, both roles.
Not having to wait for one or.
Right, exactly, yeah.
I mean, the other part of this too is, we're not the first time to do this, we're one of the last in the area, uh, so we're not recreating the wheel, we're really just moving in what they've done and. Remembering their mistakes, so if you look at Jaffrey, they've been doing this for what, ten years?
Yeah.
What's that?
Doing what?
Having a fire chief be their building inspector, full-time position, all in one.
Oh.
So, you know, we're really, you know, we look at all the towns around us, we're really behind the times, you know, Mason runs half the calls that we do. And they have a full-time chief, you know, they, they had to, they had no one else.
Is he an inspector as well or?
I believe he is.
I, I'm not sure, I know they do have a part-time building inspector now.
Yeah, I think they're, he's a full-time chief, but that, you know, that would be that next level of a dedicated chief and a dedicated.
Yeah.
Building inspector, so right now.
We're not even close.
We're not there yet, yeah, and just, um, it sounds like, you know, the needs there to have. You know, a better service for both roles, really, like to have that full-time instead of having to split. Um, trying to think.
It's time management is what happens and who has availability to, to do it and, and codes are changing and actually, there's a, a new code that I gotta research. I gotta call the fire marshal's office and find out about battery storage for, uh, backup solar. Something I learned today doing a solar inspection, that is a new code compliance item. And I tried to research it and I couldn't find it, but those are, those are how things are evolving and changing, you know? Uh, with the energy and there's a whole new energy piece coming down the line, uh, talking to this guy doing a solar project today. Uh, just kinda crazy, I don't agree with all of it, but that's, that's what's coming down the road, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, but the research and to stay up on all the codes is a lot of work in itself, it's, it's time, you know?
Yeah.
Do they send out automatic emails to the towns or?
They should, they should, but sometimes.
That's the answer I have for you, they should.
They should, but you don't sometimes get them, you know?
So on the, uh, fire department, how's that working now, moving away from the stipends? And you said, I don't remember what the rate is, whatever the rate is, but going to the hourly.
It, it varies, depends on that level of person, so, we're, we're, budget-wise, we're on track.
Budget-wise, that, that's what I was.
We're on track budget-wise, yes, we're, we're watching it very closely, uh, we just did, and I work with Matt very close on that. Almost every week, we're watching those numbers and we seem to be on track.
For, for, I mean, essentially you're guessing, right, you're guessing your call volume for the year, guessing how many hours.
It's a dark word, right, yeah.
And that is budgeting.
Yeah, that's a hundred percent, and for a first year, we're, we're right on track right now, I mean, as long as you don't get three weeks of, every month of, you know. Nine-hour a day calls, we're, we're gonna be right there, you know?
There was an aspect of management on your end where you had to make sure, you know, you didn't have too many people going out to the calls. So you're able to, you know, get that taken care of and figure it out a system.
Yep, right.
Or, cause that's kinda, you know, we had spoken about last year before, you know, going ahead with the hourly versus stipend. Was just that it's on management.
Right.
So this is kinda how I see this same aspect is like on management and how it's not just gonna happen without us knowing. We'll be aware of what's going on and, um, you know, just hear it and this, this has to be managed a certain way.
Right, exactly, and that, that's why we've, we've kinda revamped our training schedule, before it was, you know, we had a business meeting and two trainings. And then officers meeting, so what we've done is we've combined first business meeting with a training. And, uh, and then a second training, we've eliminated one meeting, which cuts the cost down. So we're not paying the members for that extra training, we're doing a combination business training session.
It must help the members to not feel like they're over.
Yeah.
Stressed about trying to make it, you know, somewhere two days and a week.
Absolutely right, and trying to eliminate one Tuesday just to give them a break, cause especially, you know, we got a couple guys with young families and. Those kids are important, so they, their concept of time is a little different now, you know?
And what we did, we traded a Tuesday for a Saturday, most people are more available on Saturdays and Sundays, so we can do a four-hour dedicated training to something. We've been using Ashby, they have a burn trailer, so we get to go there and reenact live, live fire. Something we don't get to do unless we go to the academy, we've been able to do there, but that's five hours, you know, by the time you set up, do the training and clean up. It's tough to do that on a Tuesday night, more people wanna go home at, you know.
Have to work in all day.
Instead of having a two or three hour training on a Tuesday night, that's kinda hits a topic, but you didn't get to finish it, now we're, we're hitting home runs with trainings and. Working outside people come in, which is what we want, you know, we, we want other ideas and other ways of doing it. So we're able to do all that and at still the same time save money, which is the biggest, biggest thing we wanted to try to do.
Yeah, cause we, we're going in with the hourly was a, a dark word, you know, because it wasn't unknown, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, more so than most.
Yeah, and like I say, we're, we're working, myself and Matt are working with Mitch every Wednesday and we're trying to tweak those numbers and make it work and. So, that way we have a, a realistic budget for, for next year, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, it will be interesting to see, I, my personal feeling, I think it should go on a warrant article.
Yeah.
Just seemed like it would be the right way to handle it.
Yeah, just to have the community, you know, speak out and say, yep, this is the direction that we wanna go.
Yeah.
So I feel like the support's there for it, um, you know, just all the calls that you guys handle every week, you know?
Not just here mutually.
Yeah.
You know, this is, Pittsburgh, Massachusetts calls us now.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
That's how, I mean, we, we have a reputation in town as being able to suck water out of rocks, so other cities and towns are calling us all the time. Cause if they're in a rural area, they go, we need water, they don't have hydrants everywhere in Pittsburgh, so they're calling us now to go there, which is. It is kinda cool because if, if, you know, one hand washes the other, where we're going there, we can call down for their special resources now to come in too.
Mm-hmm.
So it is, it's really helpful to our taxpayers too.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's great, the relationships that you got, you all, you know, built over the years with the surrounding communities.
Right. Towns in the Ashby.
It's nice to be having this conversation, you know, and it's not under extreme duress or, you know, feeling like it's, like forced one way or another.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Dialogue and, yeah.
And I think, you know, we're just looking for the future, you know, it's a future that town, the town's not getting any smaller, you know?
It leaves us with a lot of questions to be answered, I mean, you guys are obviously gonna have questions once we leave here, you're gonna look at what Gary made up for a packet, you're gonna see it. And gives us time to answer, which is kind of a shotgun thing whether or not we can change things, you know?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
That way we're ready for, for March and.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely believe that the, the warrant article route would be the strongest route. Um, now it puts it right out there for the community and then the whole department can really feel good about that whole aspect. Cause it's right out there in the forefront, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I believe the community has a history of, you know, coming and rallying behind its, you know, emergency services, you know?
Right, exactly.
And making sure what needs to get done gets done.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then like I said, the only, whether we run an EMD position, wrap that into this, I guess that's gonna be your call on that, you know?
I think it really could and should.
I mean, my feeling should encompass all of it.
Yeah.
A lot of towns do.
Hmm, right.
Yeah, cause then you have that dedicated person that's keeping their mind on something and.
They already know most of the codes, so when it comes to that day, you go, well, this should have been in place, well, you know, that guy is gonna be, or he or she's gonna be already caught up on it.
Yeah, that's not another person trying to work into the mix and emergency, you know, scenario, yeah, yeah. Yeah, cause there are definitely challenges having that stipend, part-time, uh, EMD, cause it's, it's, uh. Doesn't really drive that aspect forward.
No.
You know, cause, you know, people have their full-time jobs and.
Right.
And that's what it is.
It's time.
People don't work forty-hour weeks anymore, that's why you see such a difference in volunteer fire departments and, and anything really volunteer. People don't work forty-hour weeks anymore, you can't survive on it, you're fifty or sixty, you know, if you're working two jobs. So it's, it's a different world, you know, than it was fifteen years ago.
Yeah. And all the more amazing that, you know, our service is strong.
We have, we have the.
We have a strong, good turnover, yeah.
Yeah.
When we go to another town with twelve people and they only showed up with five for their own building fire.
They're, they're amazed.
Yeah, they, where are all these people going? I go, I got five more people at the station we didn't bring, you know?
Right, yeah.
I feel like it goes back to you guys are all there for a reason, cause you love it.
Yeah.
And you wanna help the community and.
Well, it drives them top, you know, everyone sees Gary's passion in this and it, it makes you wanna work, you know, and that's, it drives down each position from there. You know, we're, we're supposed to be leaders and that's what it's about, so. It makes the younger guys wanna get more and more involved too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's huge.
Yeah.
Top-down is.
Top-down.
Yep, yep.
That's awesome.
Well, do you have any questions or anything?
Nope.
Jason?
Well, not on the combined role, I'm, I'll be looking forward to seeing what this committee, um, comes up with for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, but while we have you guys here, I'm wondering about the, um, two, uh, well, there used to be temporary offices. Is there any, we're, we were hoping last year to put money aside in the building maintenance to get them things fixed up and usable. And was it, has there been any progress or?
No, it's, they're kinda.
They're still sitting.
Still sitting there, it'd be nice to get the steps to join it too, so we can get the back one cleaned up, you know?
Is there anything we can do to help?
Uh.
Give us money.
I set aside the money, I don't.
Yeah.
Do you guys, I mean, is it, is it money available that we could do a work日till and buy the supplies ourselves, or does it have to go through the fire department?
I'm not sure how it works to get stuff for the building, you know?
Where do we get the money from?
General building maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah.
We upped it a little to try.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, 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 it's gonna be used by the end of the year.
You guys would do that?
I mean, if that's the way it's gonna get done, I don't see any other way of getting it done, I mean, you can't put on the highway, guys, there, there's three.
No, there's not.
Yeah, Mark will do some of the small project stuff, replace a door or something like that, but, yeah, I don't know if the steps are.
Is there?
More than what he's comfortable with or not.
I'd kinda hate to ask this, but is there a long-term plan for that building?
Not that I'm aware of.
For the fire, like the whole, the two outbuildings and the.
Fire station.
No, no, so kinda what we were looking at with those two buildings was the same aspect to the police department. Getting it set up so it's comfortable, everything's functional, you guys have your, like a classroom or the space that you need to, you know, conduct business.
Right.
Um, to clean up some of the fire departments, I think there's some water issues in the back, um, in that building. And then just get it to a stabilization point so that, you know, down the road, like that greater conversation of where do we go from here? Cause these scenarios that we're in aren't permanent fixes.
Right, exactly, yeah.
But it's better than being ignored.
At least make it usable for five years or so.
Putting an addition on the building, like go and get rid of those two school buildings and just put, send the roof over and then actually doing a building there. You know, with offices, you may not need a whole new building, you may be able to use what's there and, and. I don't know that there's enough land there.
There may not be, but.
But I, I feel like we could have zoning and planning board.
We could ask the code enforcement.
I've been, just about before we settled the horses up, but, uh. That's, we've been down that, there was a whole plan, there's, there's been plans kicked around a, a lot for that, so.
What's your thought on it then, having seen quite a few, sounds like?
Yeah, I mean, there was plans to, to totally renovate and, and it boils down to money. Where's, where's the funding gonna come from and how do you?
You said there's, there were several plans put out.
There was some plans put out to additions and things like that, to renovations to it.
And we looked up a couple of, um, like get rid of those two buildings and buy one.
Yeah, we.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've attempted to purchase surrounding property and that is not available, that they will not, or will not sell it to us.
And then, so where this old, you know, scenario of building two was just, I, I was spoken to last week about building two.
Just.
Um, yeah, like from, uh, planning board aspect to, and, uh, CIP master plan, like where are we going? With things, so there might be like a resurgence to, you know, see if that's a viable space to truly renovate and.
It'd be really nice to have a direction, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
I get, I get fixing up where we're in for now to buy some time, cause no matter what, we're in there for a while, right, even if we have a direction that we're going in.
Say, minimum five years.
Right, so for the next five years, I mean, money that we put in there, this is all, we're gonna, you know, try to, try to cap it at something, like, you know, at the end of five years, we're gonna be somewhere. Give us a destination, but what I don't wanna do is keep putting money into something with no destination and go, no, we're just gonna fix this up for now, fix this up for now.
Temporary twelve years later.
Right, and, and those buildings that we have there, they're pretty, I mean, they're pretty used, to put it nicely. They are, we can keep putting money in to, to get us through, but it's not a really a permanent.
Right.
Plan, it doesn't look good, it really doesn't.
Well, and there's just been so many, it's a massive issue, the whole, like, no matter which way you talk about it. Cause there's, you know, and you guys know the drastic differences, so it's all the way from, don't even put any money into it at all.
No.
Is some feelings to just build them, build them a, a complex, I'm like, it's not that easy, it's not. Go build a complex, but, you know, having, uh, that full-time, you know, another full-time person, looking at some aspects of maybe grants and. Working in conjunction with, you know, the police chief to seek out, you know, something like, and come up with a plan. And maybe the appetite will be right in a few years, you know, to start going at building two again, or like what do we do with it?
There's a new block that just got a brand-new fire station from a grant, one of those small towns just north of Peterborough just got a grant for a brand-new fire station.
Really?
And you go, we should have done that, but it's, who has the time to do that?
Time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the big thing now is just to be able to do some work on what we have to, uh. I was just looking the other day, like on a T one eleven on the station, it's all rotted out, you can see right outside. So that doesn't help, you know, we talk of mold issues with the gear and moisture, especially with all this. And it's like that T one eleven, some of that back wall's gonna come off.
And it's not just a hole, it, it has that snowball effect of it, it affects equipment, it affects mold.
Exactly, yeah.
Everything else, which is money, money, money.
Snowballs into this thing, and then you try to budget for that.
But it's a matter of taking care of it too, cause I think some of the, you know, things that have hurt was the lack of attention to maintenance. Um, over a period of time.
Right.
You know, and then, but a lot of maintenance has been done.
Yep.
Um, as of late, and I think people really enjoy seeing it, it get done.
Right.
And though, you know, like what happened up at the PD wasn't the, like a full, like permanent solution. It was done, it was done well, done right, on budget, like the whole thing, like it, it just all went well, it's gonna suit their needs for the coming. You know, years.
Yeah, and the work environment there's much better, those guys are much happier.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and then completing the roof over on that DBW building.
Getting, getting all things done and.
Right.
Yeah, and starting to like really try it, like to, you know, build that pride in community, uh, with people where they would want to make that investment too.
Right, yeah.
Cause sometimes when you go and see even a hole in the back wall, you'd be like, these guys don't take care of the place, why should we? You know, miss that mentality.
We don't want people to think we don't care, it's just that we're already, we're already, our town's full there, you know?
And Matt Wardwell's design for building two.
Yeah.
Was amazing, it wasn't that expensive. That expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Comparatively.
Oh, yeah, you you talked about, you know, thirty-four million dollars for a new complex, yeah, you know, his was great, but even at his cost, it's.
I know, oh, yeah, it's still a lot of money. Where do you, where does it come from? If I win Powerball, I'm donating it.
We're holding you to that.
You gotta buy the ticket first though.
Yeah, so it's tough, you know, it's hard, cause you know, we hate to ask Peter, cause he's stretched, he doesn't have any help. Mark is busy with it, you know, to find that fine line of funding and timeframe to get stuff done is is difficult, you know?
So right now, the big holdup there is the steps, you said?
There's a, there's steps between the two buildings, because those steps were gone when they put the gas in. And uh, and I think maybe, I don't know if Mark can turn them out, and then they just never went back in.
Oh, I did, I ripped them out with the.
Yeah, so they could.
The gas line for the town, cause they had nothing small enough to be in there, so I brought my mini over there and just dug it for them. But we had to rip it up, so there's no other way to do it. I mean, there was ledges there that we had to try to dig through, so we just did it, got it done. It was one of those things where, oh, yeah, we'll come back and put those steps in, and it was two years ago, so.
So we need to make that a priority. Is that, is that something that Mark could do, or is that something?
I'm not sure.
You guys would do, would hire someone?
Money was available, we could probably get it done, and and I don't mind doing that stuff.
How much money are we talking?
I haven't, I don't know, I mean, probably a couple hundred bucks, at least.
Other than a couple hundreds.
Yes, it's all PT, so you're probably, I mean, put a cap on it, like five, five or six.
Yeah, but but the money is there, you know, we did, I know that we did utilize some of that money for something, I forget what it was. Gotta double check it, but I know that.
See if we can even, yeah, see if the money's still there before we kinda do that, and then how do you get that money to where we need, you know, we can use it?
Just gotta make sure we didn't spend it on generators.
Keys to the generators are expensive, huh?
I forgot I'd say before Jason did.
I'm really curious about how that works when we lease the property that we're putting, asking for ARPA funds for.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem like it's gonna end well for us, but it was voted that way, two to one.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I have to digress by using ARPA funds for generators, or how is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Part ARPA and part capital reserve. Cause we can use the um for the electrical, a lot, mostly the fire department electrical, it needs to be.
So that, yeah, that's actually an aspect.
So that was capital.
That's three-phase in that building, it happens in that building. You just hear those meters spinning in there.
So we were, we were hoping we'd get the grant for the compressor, cause the three phases for the compressor.
Yeah.
So was hoping we did write a grant for a new new compressor, which was a single-phase compressor, then we could have eliminated, we have not heard yet.
Yeah.
Is this for filling all?
We got that, what, years ago from Peterborough?
Yeah, that was donated from Peterborough, the compressor we have, which is a three-phase compressor.
It's a great compressor, it's just, I mean.
So you only have two phase going in there?
We have three phase going in for the compressor.
Okay.
Other than that, would have been single phase, but we had to have three phase for that compressor.
With that compressor?
Right, which was, was donated by Peterborough, so.
Okay, so you already have three phase going?
We have three phase in there, yes.
What, so where's the problem in hooking that up?
It's the wiring.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, and well, and then you pay an additional charge every month for a three-phase service, and we use it so minimal. That's why we're hoping we could get the grant for the new compressor, which is just a single-phase compressor.
The wiring in general in there.
I understand that. I mean, if you wanna isolate just the three phase, just to get that compressor going, that shouldn't cost that much.
Well, the compressor's running, right?
Yeah, off of the generator, or off of.
We're talking about the generator.
Yeah.
Yeah, the power runs fine, but I think if you were to tie that generator in, you're a mess now.
All I'm saying is, why isn't the generator tied in?
Because we don't have it.
We don't have a generator, but.
We've never had.
Yeah, no, it will, but what they're saying was that. They're looking to.
Why isn't that compressor tied in?
lessen the complication.
It it's tied.
It is, it's tied into the three-phase system.
Oh, it is tied.
Yeah, it's a three-phase compressor.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I was under the impression from our conversation that it was, that the compressor was not tied in.
No, it's tied in.
It's tied in, cause that's the only way it runs.
One at a time, please. Okay.
So.
Alright. So the generator we've ordered for that one is a three-phase generator?
Correct.
Is it?
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, so that's not going, that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
Right.
And then even so, I'm remembering conversations of the past, now if that grant did come through with the the new compressor. Then there's just a transformer of some sorts, right, that goes in to convert the power?
No, converting the power would be for DPW, because they've only got two phase in there.
No, for the new compressor, at the fire department, I'm staying at the fire department.
Well, the fire department, okay.
So they currently have a three-phase, and then the one that they are looking to see if they would get, like from the grant, is single-phase, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And then.
That's gonna, that one's gonna be a single.
That would be a single phase.
That's just a transformer.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But then you wouldn't need that big of a generator anymore. You wouldn't need a three-phase in the building, you completely get rid of the three-phase into the building. The only thing that runs on three-phase is that compressor, so the cost of, the added cost of that three-phase compressor, or that three-phase generator. The added cost of every month of the three-phase going into the building, all of that could be.
How much is a single-phase compressor? No, how much is it?
Oh, yeah, a hundred and.
Because you're reducing your generator size tremendously.
What's the cost of that generator? Do you know offhand?
No, I mean the compressor.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
Right, it's hundred and ten thousand or something like that.
Oh, they're not cheap, yeah.
Cause they're they're breathing air, you know, they're a specialty, it's not like a garage compressor, you know?
And they're in this, it's a huge metal box out that way, if the bottle ever, you know, blew up, nobody's getting hurt. It's all about liability.
Scuba diving.
Yeah, it's all about liability. They basically, they're selling a liability, that's really what they're doing.
And then, if I could digress, go off on another subject with the fire department here. That old fire truck and the pumpers. And I know I talked with, I think I mentioned it to you, and it was um one of the firefighters there. Was really interested in getting that thing back workable and and like taking care of it. Kind of having it as under the fire department's purview, who care from here on out?
Right.
I know you, I see you've been quite busy in the last few months, but still.
As we discussed about it, where you gonna put it?
So, and my thought comes, um, maybe. Temporarily, could go right across the road from you. Cause this is tied in with what we're working on here of trying to decide whether or not we should sell that property that it sits in.
Are you, are you talking about at the old town?
I'm saying temporarily, it could go there for a winter.
I wouldn't put it there for the winter.
If we're gonna afford it, I mean.
Yeah, there's some water that comes into that building.
What about?
Well, I'm I'm just saying some ideas.
Water goes into the other building.
What about, what about the town giving it to the fire department association? And the reason for that is because if it's not town, town owned, it's owned by the association, you could put it on private property without there being an issue. It'd be insured the same, but it's really a gray dark area when you take town property and and house it on private property. There is an issue with that.
Yeah.
So if we made it to the association, the association could then put money into it, but then again. It's another issue where, where do we get the money to refurb it, you know? I would love for the town to pay for that, honestly, that's a, it's a really cool truck. But, I mean, we could do it on the association, but you're talking years, in years.
Has anyone looked at it recently?
I have seen a truck in.
Is it down at the old?
Yeah, it's at the antique fire brigade. Wasn't, wasn't there some stipulations in in that document? That did about the equipment in there? Couldn't be sold or something?
The building, the building can only be used for fire-related stuff.
Okay. And did it have any stipulations on the equipment also?
No, cause it's, the equipment isn't part of the building. But we we just, the antique fire brigade just put it in there.
But my other two locations that just come to mind, and I.
Right, yeah.
Is um, the back of building number three. Which has a new roof on it.
Yeah.
Um, where I think the police chief occasionally uses it to park. Vehicles that. Yeah, it used to be EMD used to park the trailer there, but they don't anymore.
Yeah.
Right.
And then the other thought was, building number two, we have the Sallyport.
Right, yeah.
So there are places that we could.
Right, yeah.
If, if it's even possible to sell that parcel. You know, and get rid of it, but that's a key component, and then, yeah.
I think, I think if you're looking for somewhere to house it, that's easy, that's not an issue, it's. Again, what's the, what's the finish, what's the end goal?
To to renovate them.
Do we have them, is the town gonna pay for that? Is the association gonna pay for that? If the association's gonna pay for it, why isn't the association just take you over?
We were hoping that we could sell the antique fire brigade building, and then use the proceeds to, for the renovation.
Yeah, I.
That was one thought.
That was a thought.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Is it, what's the condition of the building that's in now? I haven't even been in.
Building is, I don't know, structurally, you can see the outside is.
Tight, right, yeah. Is it leaking?
It's filled with black mold.
Does it?
Yeah.
Which, I mean, you pull down, pull out, you get it out and.
Yeah.
Cause one of the openings that was in the bearing wall.
Yeah.
Um, you can see that antique fire brigade committee did something, because they said some structurally. Sound and they dated it.
Right.
That some engineer went in and looked and said that the building was.
It's just money, right?
When you win the Powerball, you're right.
Yeah.
That could be the private museum.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, but yeah, I mean, so really.
Also, there's an interest, but you're kinda waiting for direction from the town, like which way would this go?
Yeah, if you're looking for a home, we'll find a home, I mean, we'll get it, right, and and maybe something a little bit more suitable for it. Than maybe the the green center or something like that, you know, something where we can actually work on it. We could do something like that, but again, it comes down to funding. We can only, I mean, some of those trucks, those older ones, they're really hard to.
Fight back.
You're talking customizing, and it's, it's doable, and I I think there is definitely a want from the guys in the department to do it, right?
Have they gone over there and looked at it?
We haven't, we, no, we all want to.
Yeah, you should, it's really neat.
The problem is, you start that fire, it's it's hard to to not sit there and do nothing.
No, that's exactly what we're looking for. Well, that's what we're looking for.
There, if you're looking for people to be interested, we've got the people.
Yeah.
I don't wanna sit there and go, hey, look at this, and then go, okay, cool, what, what are you doing? I don't know, or isn't it cool? So, I don't wanna do that to them, I wanna go, just like we would do with you guys, I wanna go there with a plan to say, hey, this is.
This is what we're gonna do.
Well, I guess, you know, best thing that we could probably say is that, it sounds like we're open to proposals.
Yeah.
Like of how this can go down and what to do with it and.
Yeah.
Like how can it be taken care of, cause right now, it's just slowly, you know, eroding away, yeah, yeah.
I I think one of the smartest things to do is just look, if we can go look at it, figure out con- connections.
I've offered. Call me, I'll meet you over there.
Then I guess a decision on what level of restoration do you wanna do?
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I mean, mostly it's preservation.
Right, yeah.
And I think that question there is just gonna be totally answered by money.
Right.
Totally. There's no. I mean, there is obviously a cap out on how much you can dump into it, but pretty much you can.
Well, that'd be an interesting thing to, you know, fundraise for.
I was literally just thinking, we should have a fundraiser.
Those things are easier to fundraise for than a lot of the new things that you want for a department.
Yeah.
It's amazing. We've already done this once for another department. Money would trickle in, like you wouldn't believe when it comes to like.
Especially if pictures went out.
Oh, yeah, to the restoration, but when you go, hey, I need a new set of cutters, they go, ah, you know, things are a little tight this month, you're like, what?
You've got a twenty-four watt Tuesday, you own a new storage.
Yeah, oh, that makes perfect sense.
Didn't, didn't David Carolyn say that hand pumper was working?
Yeah, they they did have it working.
And we were talking with Mindy, I think it was Mindy, about the autumn festival.
Yeah.
And, no, you had brought it up that you might have a bonfire there, you'd have the fire.
Yeah, we need to.
Some of the firefighters there.
Pumper down there.
It would be so cool to bring.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that could be the start of the fundraising effort, like just to get people's interest.
Somebody told us it's working. Last time they used it, it worked.
It's it's in that building, something to see. I mean, it would be really cool to do a demonstration down there with it, and it, you know?
Yeah.
Like I said, I got the people, we got the guys down to fire, so absolutely dent it up, so.
Yeah.
Let's look at it before we, we get, you know.
Some of those aspects too, of having that, like a full-time person, would be nice to get back to doing uh Byron's mustard.
Yeah.
You know, just really some of the community events.
Right.
You know, instead of everybody just head down and working all the time, but actually coming together and, you know, celebrating.
Doing something fun.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, which is, you know, uh, we're trying to focus somewhat that way on autumn fest this year. With including some of the different town departments committees, you know, the planning board might be setting up a table too, uh, with an activity and. I don't know, just.
It's good PR stuff.
Outrage, you know, just letting everybody know the humans behind.
Right.
Yeah.
Everything.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And countless hours of volunteer.
Yeah.
Right.
Work that goes into. This town has a lot of it, you know, the committees and.
It's incredible.
Even when we were doing the renovations over there, we, I had people in this office say, hey, I'll volunteer time.
Yeah.
Over there.
Yeah.
So there's a.
We're very lucky that way, very blessed to have that, it's a volunteer effort, you know, so.
I think if building two was to do, if we were to do anything like that, and you kinda over to the community, I think you'd see a lot of people support that for a future building, you know?
Yeah.
We have it, that's the thing that people keep saying, we have this.
Right.
Sits.
We tried that.
We are leasing it.
I saw that. It's whole.
I'm glad we're talking about this too, cause I drove by, you know, the old fire brigade building today or yesterday, I was like. I can't believe we're gonna let that go another winter, I'm really nervous about.
Yeah.
That, I wonder if we shouldn't just move it over to building two, um, for this winter anyways.
Make a motion.
It may not be a bad idea, I mean, actually, that building is.
I mean, there's holes from critters and.
What if?
Maybe.
I guess maybe you should, what are you doing tomorrow?
Well, I was thinking, instead of building.
Go take a look.
Instead of building two, where it could get, you're renting that out to work mills, not that anybody's malicious over there, but accidents happen. Things, they're moving things in there all the time. What if we put it something like, we could put enough of my farm in the garage for the winter? And that way the guys can see it, we can work on it, if that's the goal that we're gonna have, is to to restore it.
Is that backspace by the green center?
Well, I mean, that's just used for.
Everything.
Random, random things.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a concern, so I don't know, like over the next couple of weeks, if we can kinda mull it over and see.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know if that Sallyport's open, but I know that that's a, a good spot, and I believe. They've shifted stuff around in there, so I don't know what's occupied and what's not anymore.
Honestly, I think it changes by a week.
Yeah. Do you think they're back there that frequently?
Well, I did an alarm activation there a couple of months ago, and then one more recently, and it's, it's different.
I thought that that was like something to do with humidity, or it's something in the building with the alarm faulting.
Supposedly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, they had a stretch of an issue there, uh, we haven't been back there since the last time, but there was a stretch where we're going there for quite a bit, but. Uh, just even those couple of times we went there, you see that they'd be, they're they're definitely moving stuff around in there. You know?
Uh, as far as that goes, when we went in there on the Heritage Commission, I didn't think there was any imminent structural. Well, the sheetrock's coming down cuz. Being unconditioned.
The water aspect, like and how much longer that roof's gonna hold up, and if we weren't gonna move it, throw a tarp on the on the roof just to. You know, stop the further decay.
Do you guys have, I mean, is there something we can go look at right after this while it's hot? Just go look at it. Do you have something after this?
I have a building. For an overnight. Yes, I do. They're doing an overnight renovation at TD Bank, so. Title might be there sometime tonight. He goes, I'll be here all night, so anytime.
Well, that's tough to do, huh?
Cuz there was, you had mentioned a while back that you'd like to go over the permitting fees. That's not with the fire department.
Right, yeah.
But I'm, yeah, I'm looking forward to going.
So that'll be something as a revenue, just to generate some revenue to cover those costs, so, yeah.
I thought we just updated those last year or something.
I don't know.
Do you have a a basic permit fee?
It would be interesting to see what we're at in collections through the building department. Cause I believe that was a part of the justification of having a building apart, department was that it wasn't gonna uh cause burden on the taxpayers. So, yeah, is it, who knows, maybe there's even more money there than we realize and. You know, it'd be an easier shift than sell, you know, where we're, you know, not gonna actually impact. You know, the taxes by that much.
I can run a report and I will.
Yeah, just to identify that and and see where we can go, you know, cuz you can. Use it for revenue. You can't make money off from building permit fees. It's it's not a lot in the state. But you can use it to offset your operating costs. Uh, with building permit fees.
Yeah, yeah, so this should definitely be a part of the conversation.
But not tonight.
Not tonight, no. And I think inherently from, and I'll try to find some more research at time is what other towns are charging for fees. Uh, I know like Ringe, their sign permits are yearly and boy, their sign permits are expensive.
Yeah, and we don't even have a sign permit.
Right, and that's something trying to work on, but yeah. So anyway, so there is the potential for revenues to be had to help offset the costs. And it's just research, that's all it's time.
I'm sure everybody's website, you have to post your fees now, so I'm sure everybody's website.
So we have them all posted online.
But that's another way to go find someone else's fees.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. You can go anybody's website.
I think I have seen.
Yeah, we just updated the zoning board ones.
What's the slackboard ones?
We just got rid of the only fee we had. Fireworks.
Jason won.
No, the people won.
Cool, yeah, no, I definitely appreciate. You coming in and preparing this and.
Future anyways, like say this one, try and generate some stuff.
Well, yeah, and it gets us, goes right on that tone of planning for the future. And, you know, it's further stabilization of another department, so.
Rick and then the gym and then I took over and then after July I'm gone and then it's like, how does it, where does it end, you know? And every time you come in, there's a whole training period and.
And it looks like you guys are looking to um. Kick off scaled salaries for noip switch. We've talked about it. Since I've been on this board, it's been. There's some definite pros and cons to it.
So when you say, what's your version of scale salary? Or the salary, yeah, salary scale. So is that like based on time and position?
Right, yeah.
So you can project that out. Yeah, yeah, cuz we haven't actually had one executed yet, but we've been looking, you know.
I have several samples.
Yeah, we've, I have multiple copies of multiple samples of salary scales. It's tough when you grow up with merit-based pay and then you're gonna implement. Show-up based pay. That's where it gets hard. I know the, I know the other side of the story. He's getting a merit raise cuz he's your buddy and. And he, you don't like how he smells, so he's not getting a raise.
You've seen that other end, you know, where they can actually erode people's, you know, willingness to wanna work and volunteer and.
And where where it really is, and you can say volunteer, not volunteer, but, you know, nobody has to be there. You know, our guys, there isn't one person that is dedicated, let me, wrong word, that has to be there by contract, you know? They can come and go as as they please, so by doing a salary scale, everybody kinda puts it in perspective that. Everybody gets the same and then that's, right now, doing the hourly is why we're getting such a tremendous turnout. I think that has a lot to do with it cuz it does cover costs, whether it's gas or some red lights for their vehicle and tires and stuff like that.
Well, and it also helps too because the people that don't do anything, don't get paid.
Then they don't get paid. If they don't show up, they don't get paid.
It's a hard, it's a hard thing at the end of the year to hand someone a check when they haven't showed up, but because they're on the books or they meet bare minimum requirements, they still got a check. You got Johnny that did a hundred week, a hundred hours last week and you got Phil that did two and he did the same exact check. Two, that's tough.
Nothing's ever cut and dried.
But this, this makes it more, this makes it fair.
Yeah, no, there's no question. And even when it was first proposed. That was the selling coin for it, the actual fairness.
And the taxpayers are getting what they're they're paying for, right? You're getting people to show up, you're paying by them by the hour. That's fair. It's a good way to justify it that way too.
And so when people call, they know that somebody's coming. And as other towns, uh, beyond that, you call, you don't know if anybody's coming. Sometimes there is, sometimes there's not.
Radio land, you can get multiple other towns in the area, get re-toned and re-toned, and then if you're a mutually town, get toned because they can't even get anybody to show up for their own call.
This is gonna be the first thing you tell the newcomers to town. You should try other towns.
So it's it's tough. It's hard. The organization is hard to find people, you know?
Did you guys have anything else that you wanted us to consider?
I got a meeting to go to and a bank inspection to do.
Cool, thanks for coming in.
Let me know when you wanna go there and.
I'll meet up with you this week and I'll I'll.
And then the uh, the little buildings.
See what, see what's in there for funds.
Came up for me and it's like, I felt like we.
Well, especially the front building that they were using now for training. They wanted to move the training over to the back building, but there was also some roof leaks or something.
Yeah, it needs tiles, it needs carpeting, just some miscellaneous cosmetic work.
Funded all that last year and, you know, the voters approved the the warrant, so.
Just see what's in there for.
Yeah, I have to check with Mark. I know I have most of projects on the board to do there. I don't know if you should check with Mark.
That'd be fantastic.
So you have a copy of the um budget?
Right, yeah.
So just go to G G B Maintenance and see what's.
See what's there.
Some of the stall too was a difference in perspective of our outgoing chief versus the, you know, incoming. And what that was. So if you guys have a completely different vision for it.
Yeah, we should make the building usable, you know, it's there's nothing, structurally, there's nothing wrong.
Cuz I know there had been conversations too of donating it to like another department, the back building, like it wasn't even gonna ever be used or. So, you know, just really come up with your plan and.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to take that back building and make it into a training center.
Well, that's what we should and then, you know.
Training room, just like, just like this.
Training room, right. And going forward, if, you know, we're fortunate enough to have a full-time chief building inspector, that front building could be utilized as. That person's office area in the back becomes training, so it's not the the public way, you know, so.
Whatever your vision is on it. Just let us know and.
I think, yeah, I think what we want is.
Another thing to drive forward. We did our jobs and set the money aside.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, we set the money aside and if there's some variations of vision for what to do with it. Doesn't matter to me.
I just can't remember what it was, but I think it was more the difference in what the perspective of whether or not that back building was actually gonna be used or not. And I can't remember which way the conversation was going.
Mine is, it certainly could be used for meetings and trainings and just makes it more of a professional space. Right now, just kinda. A bunch of desks.
So it may not have been a, like, the the money was used, it was just, I knew that there's something going on with those buildings. And I think that's what it was, was just the difference in opinion, like one way to the other, so, uh, yeah. Drive it forward.
Conquer all day tomorrow at a class?
Smart.
Thursday morning or next week, yeah. Tuesday morning I could.
I'll be here Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning, okay.
I'll give you, I'll text you and see what your day looks like, cuz Monday might be bad and. You might get filled Tuesday morning, so I'll text you before I come up.
Now onto the roundtable.
Roundtable. It's actually a rectangle. Are you?
Did you have anything um to go over during this section, Debbie?
I had spent hours with the software people and like I said, the more I talk to them, the more amazing it's gonna be. Carlene was in there today with us and she's all excited about it. Um, it's gonna make a huge difference. Time-wise with payroll and and just payables, like everything is gonna be so good. I can't wait.
What did they think of us um extending access to B M S?
Yeah, I told him about that today and he said that's actually good cuz that way, once we get going, if we need anything, like. He can help extract the data, exactly. So he, he, yeah, he thought it was, he he had said the same thing like that we thought, I wish we could have just done paid for a quarter. Instead of having to pay for a whole year, but.
As painful as that was.
It's painful. Yeah, I agree.
Once you lose it. But it's going forward.
Or it'll cost twice as much or four times as much. Cuz now it's all encrypted and hidden in some corner.
Right, yeah, we can get it.
We have to press this button instead of that button.
We just can't, we can get it, we just can't read it. Um, and then um the M S one is supposed to be done tomorrow. All the other stuff is in for the setting of the tax rate. So hopefully Michelle from the D R A will be calling me soon, once the M S one is uploaded, so. Um, it's supposed to be in on September first, but I guess Jim asked for an extension. So, um, the extension is Thursday. So Jim Coffey. What assessors?
They asked for it.
He asked the, well, I don't know if he asked Dave from Eminence Assessing to ask for the extension or he actually did, I'm not sure. But.
All the other pieces are in place.
Two weeks. Just waiting on the M S one.
Well, that's good. Still earlier than, you know, sometimes.
Earlier, but cuz because what they do is they go by whoever has their all that, like you have to have all your pieces to the puzzle. In the box. And if you're missing one, they won't even look at you. So all the, all the towns in New Hampshire. Depends on when they get their stuff in, is, and that's the order they go in to set the tax rate. So. I mean, if they can get it in there by Thursday, I mean, it'll probably take two or three weeks. Now we're talking mid-October. I mean, I kinda was hoping to get the tax bills out by May-October, but that's not gonna happen, so. Just so people aren't slamming.
You just have your, you have your eyes on it next year, you know, same thing. Just another hiccup that you can try to, you know, start talking about in August with the assessors and say, hey, how you guys doing? Yeah, so don't be looking for no extensions this year.
Yeah, I know.
You wanna get this done? Alright, that's good.
Yep, so that stuff's all in except though, like I said, waiting on the M S one, um. Trying to think of what else. Go ahead around, I'll come, I'll I'll call Jason.
It's odd, sometimes you come like.
I'm not authorized.
You come full, like your, your folder full and ready to like.
I know, I know. I, yeah. I spent all day on the phone today, like on the computer, like a Zoom thing, with the software guy, literally from nine o'clock this morning till four-twenty.
That's great that that's, you know, taking place and, yeah, that's going into effect.
I can't wait. I cannot wait.
See, I have my fingers crossed. It's like the next split in the road. Like built up anticipation of not excellent something's gonna be.
Yeah, you know?
Just waiting for that.
And I'm afraid, I'm afraid. I keep saying it. I'm like, stop saying that, cuz you know what happens when you do that. Disaster.
Jason, did you have anything you wanted to discuss? Lou?
I brought it up about the visibility on the thing with, that we had with Gary. About the only thing I wanna talk about.
Building inspector, um, the, the reports, the code enforcement reports monthly.
Alright, seems to be a hot topic nowadays.
Yeah. Sometimes we have nothing going on, other time, and when it rains, it pours. It's all at once. What you got, John?
Just a reminder, uh, for next Wednesday's planning board meeting, um, you know, that we had committed to go. Uh, so that came up quick.
I'm sorry, what's?
Um, October fourth, the planning board meeting, uh, with Kerry, the welfare officer. And the presentation, so that's next week. So it's a reminder, um. Autumn Fest planning, you know, is in full swing and, you know, they're shaping up to be a great day on October fourteenth.
October fourteenth.
Yeah, for the community. Yeah, down at the park. So, uh, it would be neat if this just sort of came together last night of having a series of tables for the town. Um, and maybe, you know, having, you know, people to kinda cycle in, like to go and. I don't know, meet and greet or, you know, manage the table, um, if people have any questions about the different. You know, board committees, you know, that, you know, we all serve on, you know, it'd be a good time to. You know, just give some visibility to us. You know, a lot of the community is gonna be down at the park and enjoying that day, so. Might be a really good way to like have some outreach, yeah.
People that don't know who everybody is can put a face to the.
Yeah, cuz they get to see us on TV every week, so.
What time is that?
They'll be wanting selfies with us.
What time is the um? Is the Autumn Fest?
Uh, it starts at eleven o'clock.
Eleven to.
Four.
Four.
Um, with that being said, the Remax balloon is gonna be, um, doing rides from three to five. And then we're gonna have a bonfire from like six or six-thirty to eight.
And then fireworks?
No, no.
Why? You don't need a permit.
It just seems like, uh, and I've been waiting for numbers from Mindy, like to actually see, you know, what's there and feel good and justifying. Cuz, you know, the low number that she had gotten for a quote was like forty-two hundred bucks.
For fireworks?
Yeah, which isn't a lot, like in big scheme, but in little scheme and, you know, thinking forward.
It's money that could go to the pavilion. It's money that could go toward the pavilion.
Uh, yeah, yes and no, yeah, percentage of that, cause I, I imagine it'll all get broken up between all the different revolving accounts and, um, so.
Do you have to buy tickets for this or anything?
No, just for rides.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, you know, then the fire department's going to be, um, running the snack shack and providing all the food, so they'll be cooking and, um, they're gonna be doing, uh, chicken barbecue. Those tickets should be coming out soon. Uh, they're gonna try to do pre-sale for the half-chicken dinners.
Oh.
Yeah, uh, and, uh, Gordon and Randy Weirnem are gonna be heading up the, uh, chicken barbecue part. Uh, Gordon helped me out at the high school last weekend and, or the weekend before. And he's like, hey, if my dad does it, cause I was gonna do it down at the park, but, um, Randy wanted to, so he freed me up to do, run around and.
Is it, is it them that do it down at the, uh, children's fair or is that the?
Yeah, yeah.
Masons?
No, Rand, yeah, Randy does, and he's a mason too, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I don't know if he does it as a part of the, the masons or not, but.
I think it's, I think that's what it is, I thought they always had a thing.
Yeah, yeah, they got their own special mix. Everybody's got their own secret sauce, so.
Yeah. Cool.
Maybe the, the Weirnem, uh.
Nice.
Barbecue chicken, but, uh.
Alright.
Yeah, um. Doing touch of trucks, all sorts of, you know, heavy equipment, you know, if the ground stable is gonna be down at the park and, uh, we're gonna utilize that fullback Babe Ruth field, uh, for that touch of truck aspect. Yeah, so like the DPW will bring down some trucks.
Okay.
Um, last year with the ladder truck from Greenville, um, came. And we're all condensed down on, to the lower field part, but now there's more things going on, so we're gonna, like, expand it out there.
Cool.
Yeah, all sorts of, uh, different companies are bringing down some of the big equipments, like concrete pump trucks and.
Cool.
Yeah, uh, excavators and all sorts of, you know, cool stuff. I think Shaw's is gonna bring a dump truck, like dump truck down and, uh, yeah. Just a fun community day.
Yeah.
It's, what's nice about this is that it's not based on feeing people, like, so there is no admission fee.
Right.
Um, you have the choice of if you want to, you know, purchase things or not, which is, you know, typical, but, um.
Like craft tables or fireworks work at tables, that kind of stuff?
Like craft stuff for free, um, some we're gonna charge tickets for, um, and they met last night to talk about that. I don't know if they're gonna do wristbands this year or not, which would get you, like, so many rides on so many of the bounce houses, cause we have a lot of bounce houses down there for the kids too.
Wow.
Um, Dee Daily and the planning board are, it's gonna be donating two hundred little pumpkins. Um, for the kids to decorate with like Sharpie markers or something.
Painting or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure if they have anybody from the planning board to, to man the table. And that's where kind of that idea developed of this, we had a few tables, all it could, would take is a couple town officials or employees to, you know. You know, work that and.
Fourteenth.
Yeah. You just fully committed.
I'm fully, I can't do it the fourteenth. It's the grandkids.
What's up with that? Bring them down, like they have fun anyway, oh.
Then I have to go there, cause they get stuff going on.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, so now it's just gonna be really good, we had a balloon tying person, uh, for the kids, face painting. I believe the fire department's also gonna be running, um, some type of, like a waterhouse that people have been asking for, that, that they really enjoy, the kids, like you get to spray the hose at the house.
Oh, cool.
I don't think the house is burning, but.
That's cool.
Yeah, um, and actually there's some, another aspect too, is, I'm gonna butcher his last name, Bruce Rutsela?
Rutsela, yeah, that's right.
Alright, um, is gonna be bringing down a Sonicit. And I don't know if he's gonna be working on one or have it for people to kind of go in or not, like the, a couple ideas have been floated about it, so it's gonna be.
What is this again? What did you call it that he's bringing?
A sauna.
A sauna.
Yeah, yeah, down to the park. I don't know if he's gonna bring one completed and one that's in process, but to kind of.
Cause he builds them, right?
It's gonna be interactive.
Yeah, oh, cool.
Yeah, he's gonna, you know, be able to give information out regarding that, so that was kind of, uh, a cool development. And hopefully there'll be more tradespeople, um, you know, that wanna, you know, do the same thing maybe next year. You know, cause it really, you know, shows their, their trade and, you know, what they do, so it's advertising for them and, yeah, and then also.
He should raffle one off.
Spark the interest of, um, kids.
Yeah.
That are looking for what direction they wanna go in life, yeah, cause that's not something that, you know, a lot of people think of, that, that could be, um, a career.
Yeah.
You know, um, it's funny that you bring up raffling stuff off. Uh, but an idea that was asked was if the town could put together a basket of town feed things, maybe? Like to raffle off, you know, uh, one item that was brought up was a transfer station sticker. No, that's. We got a pulp box, a shiny box.
I think you can do a transfer station ticket, a sticker, uh.
And when it was brought, I wasn't sure what to say, cause I don't know what the rules are too, like are we allowed to give something for a raffle? That would have generated tax, you know, like money, I just don't know if it's allowed.
Yeah.
So.
That's a good question.
However, I think maybe a citizen could buy one and then donate it to the rec department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, although like a transfer station pass, you'd need a license plate number, but, um.
Yeah.
A gift certificate.
Yeah, yeah, so it's just, an idea, that was kind of, I didn't know what there was, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's about it. Could've bought him a fireworks permit, but.
You like that one, huh?
You still have seven days, you'd have to wait before you can light off your pack of crackers.
Or we just put together a basket of like showing all the free stuff? Yeah, look at it, no fireworks permit.
Yeah.
Free. It's a gift that keeps giving.
I know, I mean, there really isn't anything.
One thing I wanted to talk about on the building permit.
See, there you go.
Was to look at, um, whether or not we have requirements for building permits for things that we shouldn't have.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Cause a lot of things are almost semi-maintenance items. And it seems like I remember when we looked at it last year, that there was, you need a permit to re-roof a house or something.
Hmm.
Stuff like that, I think we should consider whether or not then there's.
I don't think re-roofing a house.
Yeah, maybe not.
We do roof permits, but I don't know if it's.
Replace, replacing a furnace.
We do do roof permits.
That's what I wonder, I mean, them kind of.
I think we've had like two a year or some crazy thing, and I don't know if it's for.
A couple hundred get replaced a year.
This is what, and my whole thing in bringing this up is obviously reduce some burdens on people. But also, a lot of people aren't aware.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Seeing people and then you tell them, well, I didn't know, now what do I do?
Yeah.
And it's like, well, I don't know what you do now, but, you know, to have some of that, that, that's.
I think people understand the importance to, you know, having things checked and utilizing good, you know, contractors that are gonna get a job done. Or even homeowners that will utilize the building department in order to balance the questions off, you know, like.
Yeah.
How high should I go with ice and water shield on a such pitch or, you know, like what's the recommendations for the area? And then that just gets that, that's what the building department's for, is to help guide, uh, people. Um, yeah, that'll, that'll be good to like, fully redo that.
Yeah.
But back on the, like, topic of Autumn Fest, the fun stuff, we actually, we have a, a lady who committed to do T-shirts down there too. Autumn Fest T-shirts, custom, so, that'll be neat, you know, like the people will be able to get their, you know.
Mm-hmm.
A shirt of their design or placement, you know, however they want things made in, in real time, that's gonna be set up, like right along, like with the town, you know, stuff. So, I know I'm missing something, but yeah, there's a lot of vendors, the farmer's market, uh, people are gonna be down there, um, not all of them committed to come, but some did, um.
Is the honey guy gonna be there?
I don't know, I don't know, but I think we had close to twenty vendors that have committed already.
Wow.
Yeah.
Now, are you charging them per, like a table fee?
Yep, yep, um, so like the T-shirt lady, no, um, cause, you know, she's not there to make money, she's just doing it to donate back.
Oh, she's donating, okay, yeah.
Um.
If you're selling something, there's a fee.
I can't remember if it's ten or twenty dollars, but there is a, a nominal fee, uh, for the table. And then if we provide a table too, then it's another five bucks.
Yeah.
Uh, which the congregational church is so generously, you know, committed to letting us utilize as many tables and chairs as what we need for that, uh, again.
Nice.
Yeah, um, they're gonna have, uh, Mike Ordway there, uh, doing music, I believe for the full, um, four or five hours.
Cool.
And this year is gonna be interact, like, interactive with the kids, uh, cause Sterns and Burton, you know, stepped the lecture fund.
Yeah.
Um, you know, okay, the funding of the music portion, uh, because he's gonna do some music theory, you know, talks and. Uh, we went and bought, you know, small instruments, I think a couple hundred little variety pack of instruments, so the kids can kind of, you know, play and, you know. Uh, little guitars and flutes and, you know, it could be kind of neat, yeah, harmonicas, I'm sure, here in the back. Yeah. There'll be a lot of parents with noise, noise makers at home.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, so it should be a really good.
Yeah.
Fun community day, um, yeah, so come on out. Hopefully, we don't get any rain, it could be on that rare side of, like, no rain on.
Don't say it out loud.
Was it like, I think fourteen of the last sixteen weekends it's raining or something?
Yeah.
But I believe it was something like that that I heard, so when I heard that, my head dropped, I was, oh, man, you know? But, hey, that's what it is. Yeah, 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 so.
Alright, I'm gonna have to see what time the girls thing at dances. It's probably like two o'clock.
Yeah.
It's right in the middle.
Yeah, and that's pretty much all I have too, so.
So now it can come back.
Oh, you already had your second go.
I know, all this is third, and then I'll authorize Debbie to take her spot. You said you're gonna pull a Jason and get back to.
Did you come up with anything?
No, I'm good.
Alright.
But we, we have a heritage commission, um, meeting next week. And somebody said, or it was Fran, the chairwoman, said, what about, um, what are we gonna do about maintaining the clock now that we have it? At least telling the time, we haven't got the bell figured out yet.
Yeah.
And when she first brought that to me, I said, for a hundred years, the town has paid out of the general maintenance fund.
Right.
To maintain the clock, so it's not our concern, but then there was these last, what was it, twenty years? Where nobody did anything with it, except Bruce would.
Right.
Volunteer to do stuff up there. Um, so, I guess I'd like to know what the boards.
We need to put that in the budget.
Thought is on its town property, do you wanna put a warrant out to sell the clock? Do you wanna just say, hey, it's part of our property, we'll just have it in our maintenance along with everything else? Or do you feel like it should be a separate line item or what is the thoughts, the board?
I feel like it should be separate.
Do we actually own the part of the, the building where the clock is housed? No.
Zero building.
Just the clock.
Just the clock itself.
Yeah.
Equipment maintenance. And that's what, that's what my thought was, it just comes out of the general.
General government buildings maintenance.
And once there's, you know, like that's, again, you go back twenty years, I don't know what happened, you know, like twenty years, I know there's a downturn in the economy, but, um. A lot of things, you know, took a hit, like, that were regularly kept up with and a part of a process and a system that just keep reaching back to that twenty-five-year time period consistently. Like it.
Strange.
Yeah, yeah.
Tough.
So, yeah, it definitely should be something that's, you know, planned for and, um.
I feel like it should be a separate line item, maybe we can get an idea from Bruce, like what he anticipates it would cost per year?
Yeah.
To put that in the budget.
And what would the board's thoughts be on, um, should, should the heritage commission look into putting it up for bid? I mean, I think the cost that Bruce would bring in would be substantially cheaper than putting up for bid, but.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, he knows it, he's been maintaining it forever.
But it might be a good thing for the heritage commission to keep track of, um, you know, and just sort of push that.
To be in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah, to make sure that it gets done, which is another tough part, because that kind of got, you know, defunct for a period of time, yeah. And so it's great to see it resurrected again.
And making, making money going into maintaining it, um, a line item in their budget. Except that that's town equipment, that's not really the heritage commissions.
But I, I feel like we can add a line under general government buildings maintenance.
Okay.
Clock maintenance.
Like it used to be.
Yeah.
You can see it in the old town reports.
Rod?
Did you say anything about the minister about for Bruce to get a key so he can get in there and work on that clock?
Yeah, I'm working on it now, yeah.
Yeah, we've talked to Mike and.
And Mike told me, then I told Sean, I mean, yeah, Sean.
Yeah.
Mike said he wasn't gonna do any work until he got a key.
Yeah, no, yeah, everything's in process, Rod. I thought I followed up with you, but I called, um, Mike right after our conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all getting worked out now, yeah.
Cause he said he could get it working, but.
Well, at least it's telling the, it's showing the current time, and you can actually read what hour the hands are pointing at, I think it's so cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Finally see that again. Alright, I just.
Thanks for, thanks for checking it out.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's why I did, I did speak with Mike and, you know, his concerns and things, has he dropped off the key yet or?
Not to my knowledge.
Cause he did commit to bringing in a key.
Yeah, he said he was gonna bring a key.
But, um, then we were thinking it would be a good policy to have two people go at once, I think, we may have discussed this or said something, um, in passing. But, yeah, just to have another person along with whoever's doing the maintenance.
That's what Mike requested or?
Mike did request it, but it put him at ease when I, you know, said that, cause there was some, some concerns about the securing of the building and just a double check of.
And there's not, there's not many times a year that, now that it's running, it's.
And then give them, give them some notice.
Right.
So that they know that we're going over, so it's not just a pop in at some random day or night or.
Service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that'd be, that'd be more planned, and that's how, you just respect people's property and they'll respect you, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so even though it's the town, doesn't mean you just, you know, run into a building whenever you want, yep. Alright.
Alright.
And then we build our, um, what do you call it? Facility there, we can take the clock out of there and put it in the, our new facility, we can make.
In the old town hall.
All that too.
We'll put it back in there.
Or, oh, we can grab the bell from the congregational church.
Yep.
The clock. Put the bell back together and put it up on building two.
Part of the clock.
Is it a part of it?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if it.
I thought it was a separate thing, they were donated at two different times by two different people.
But is it, but they're.
No, the bell that's in.
I'm saying it's a part of the town.
Yeah.
Oh, the bell.
Property.
So there's another bell at the Congo Church.
Yeah.
That's ours.
Yeah, yeah, you got one clock and two bells.
Yeah.
This is good.
Yeah. For building two.
Oh, cool.
Build this people.
Yeah, when we build our safety facility.
Yeah. Alright, excellent.
Cool.
Last call.
No, I'm all set.
Good?
Good.
Uh, thank you very much, Rod, for your continued.